Good evening, everyone. I welcome you to the dual meeting tonight of the Exeter School Board. Okay, I'll speak up again. First, we will have a reorganization meeting which is required by law that all school boards reorganize to recognize the elected individuals, and then we will go immediately into a workshop session for the school board. The first thing we need to do is those people who are not on the ballot need to determine a president pro temp who will take charge of meeting. So we have Pat and Mike and Jim, the only three that were on the ballot. So you can decide who you want to be the president and pro temp.
I vote for Mike. Don't.
As long as it's serving, why do you better take it?
My role in this job is right here. You can slide up and stood up.
Don't change the height on the seat.
Wow, I see why you're so much taller than Russell during this meeting now.
That was a statement of confidence.
I just got to slide the chair out.
Starting to feel comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, I love your hairpins.
I'm getting your money for this office, just for perspective.
Here are the positions of the electionee. Yes, sir.
See, will not these people get more than that?
Eventually.
At some point, yes.
At some point.
It will be.
We have to determine their qualifications. Having had the nomination, election of the president pro temp by self James Brady, I'm now going to go on to our second bullet point, which is this certificates of election to be read, a list of legally elected and qualified school directors that we've had. The first I'll name is David Bender of 24 Thornbury Road, Reading, Pennsylvania, 19606, has been elected to a school director position for Exeter Township School District for a term of four years. Russell J. Deesinger of 102 Wessex Court, Reading, Pennsylvania, 19606, was elected to a position of school director for Exeter Township School District for a term of four years. Carol Kushner of 16 Estates Drive, Reading, Pennsylvania, 19606, has been elected to a position of school director for Exeter Township School Director for a term of four years. Robert H. Quinter of 3501 Woodland Avenue, Reading, Pennsylvania, 19606, has been elected to a position of school director for the Exeter Township School District for a term of four years. And Timothy Joseph Timora of 10 Lynnree Avenue, Reading, Pennsylvania, 19606, has been elected to a position of school director for Exeter Township School Director for the balanced term of two years that he's filling out. School Board members for the year of 2014 going forward are David S. Bender, James J. Brady Jr., Russell J. Deesinger, Michael Japina Jr., Carol A. Kushner, Patricia A. O'Brien-Pesha, Robert H. Quinter Jr., Joseph R. Staub, and Dr. Timothy Timora.
Post the call, Mr. Staub. I don't have the individual names.
I have one, Bob.
I know there's the office. There's one to your left.
There is?
Oh, there you go.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you very much. Now, do the first of all, can you do this in a group or an individual? Okay. Please stand. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Next, we'll have the nomination and election of president for the 2014 year. Do you have any nominations? Yes, Mr. President. I nominate Robert Quinter. I have a nomination as second. Do we have any other nominations for position of president? Yes.
I move that the nominations be closed.
Second.
It's been moved as second, we close the nominations for president at this point, having only one person nominated. Mr. Quinter, do you choose to accept this position?
I will accept the position.
Okay, may I have a... I guess that's all we need to do. We need a little such thing. I think we should go... Let's have a look. All four, please say aye.
Aye.
All against?
No.
Okay. We have the group minus one that are for the nomination of Mr. Quinter. Next, we'd like to nominate an elected position of vice president for 2014.
I have takeover. I have takeover.
Good job, Sean.
Okay. I was preparing for the manual right before I showed up. I know.
I thank you all very much.
I was a hot white.
I would like to open the nominations for vice president.
I nominate Dr. Bender.
Second.
Motion is second. Any additional nominations?
Move the nominations be closed.
Second.
Motion is second. Any objections? All in favor of Dr. Bender is the only nominee. He can choose to accept the...
I do accept.
All in favor of Dr. Bender as vice president, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We have a listing of the meeting dates included as attachment R6. Request a proposal approved.
So moved, please answer.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting attachment R6 as the school board meeting dates 2014, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Being at the... Next is the authorization of signatures. That is the president, vice president, Ms. Gaidish, and Patricia O'Brien-Pesha for the general funds payroll account, capital project fund, construction fund, bond account, and food service funds. I would solicit a nomination to give the listed individuals out of party.
So moved, second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Since we have had no change in personnel, IM-8 is not necessary. I would request your indulgence. I have never been so presumptive as to make up the committee announcements before the election. So I will have those appointments to committees and the other positions at the next meeting. I would request a proposal to keep the representatives and committees as they are until the next voting meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
Are you referring to nine and 10, or?
I'm referring to nine and 10. All in favor of retaining the current assignments of nine and 10 until the next voting meeting, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So ends the... Except the most of the end of the reorganization meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of the reorganization meeting being complete, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting reorganization board is complete. We will...
Really disappoint on some. There's no boundary lines here.
We'll just move right into the workshop meeting. We have Mr. Legath with some noteworthy individuals from the tennis team.
Okay, good evening. If you want to face this. I wanted to introduce to you, this is Ally Snyder and Sammy Snyder. Ally is a sophomore. You want to go around? And Sammy is a freshman. There are two of our tennis players from this year. They both, obviously, were doubles partners and won the Berks County Championship and the District III AAA Championship, which is an unbelievable honor. In the Berks County Championship, they defeated the two girls from Bucks Athletic. In the District Championship, they defeated Vanham Township, who's always very, very good when it comes to tennis. So it was an amazing accomplishment. They finished their season 17-1. They lost in the second round of states to a team from Fox Chapel who won the state championship. So I wanted to... Their coach, Abby Rudd, is also here. I wanted to introduce her as well and just congratulate these ladies what I've done to create a plaque for them on their accomplishments this year.
So nice.
Congratulations. Do we flag? I don't know if you guys have any questions or any...
What does the tennis team plan for and on for for next year?
Oh, we're going all the way.
Yeah, we're going all the way.
State champs. Very talkative.
On behalf of the board, for some reason, people talk about major sports being football and all this kind of stuff. But to me, any athlete out there performing to the limits of their abilities is a champ. We thank you for representing us and congratulations on your achievements.
I also wanted to just let you all know, just happening within the last 24 hours, we had three girls volleyball players named for the All-State First Team, and our football team was recognized by our football coach representing them last night at the football banquet, who won the sportsmanship award again that's voted on by the Berks County officials, that Exeter football team was the most well-behaved team in the county. So it's another unbelievable...
They tackled very nicely.
They always say, "Excuse me," before a tackle.
The officials and some of the coaches and other coaches did. So I just wanted to let you know that and thank you very much. And I appreciate you having the ladies here today. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank my coach, Abby Rudd, and Mr. Kane for helping us with doubles, and Mr. Legath for driving us all the way up to Hershey many times.
Yes.
Now, those of you who are here for these festivities, if you'd like to leave now, we're about to get into the boring part. You're welcome to stay.
I have to stay.
I didn't say you could. I would like to announce that we had an executive session prior to this workshop to discuss personnel. Mr. Staub is not here. Is anyone here from the...
Business functions, next week we will be looking at the recommendation of, to the board, for the awarding of contracts for the purchase of fuel as in natural gas, gasoline, heating oil, and diesel. In Berks County, joint purchasing for the period of July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. Natural gas was awarded to UGI for DS accounts, which represents heating, and Hess for NT accounts, which represents other uses. Gasoline and heating oil were awarded to Tally Petroleum Enterprise, Inc. Diesel Tank Wagon was awarded to Tally Petroleum, and Diesel Transport Resort was awarded to Petroleum Traders Corporation, as you would find in attachment V and not A. Secondly, we're looking at bus bids for two new 77-passenger school buses and one new 24-passenger school bus with three wheelchair positions that are scheduled to be opened on December 3rd, 2013. The recommendation of bid awards to the buses will be awarded after December 17th, 2013 for the meeting. Third, we have attachment V dot C. We are looking at the recommendations to the board to approve a budget transfer for this month, meaning 2013, November 2013, to the amount of $1,504.
Are there any concerns or any interest on these?
Can I just mention that the fuel cost, the commodity for gas actually is down from the current year, about 10 to 12 percent. And our diesel is down a little bit. Gas is up a bit. Fuel oil is down. So we, budget-wise, it's very small. We might say about $25,000 in that area. Gas will be a little bit more. So it's good, good results.
No, it's not working, Mr. Staub.
Not working. And do you know, like, with the buses, how old they were and how much mileage were on each one?
I didn't bring Mr. Whitehead's transportation report with me. He presented that the last time, but I'll get that information for the next meeting.
Personnel, Dr. Bender.
First item, Part A, would be resignations. One administrative resignation and then number two, resignations of certificated staff. Part B, we have appointments of certificated staff, A through D. Part C, a leaves of absence for certificated staff. And then Part D, your staff conferences. That's it for personnel. Are there any questions?
Well, I just have a question to the research. I have a problem with people that don't know how to fill out their applications properly as far as their resume, as to, you know, how they should put...
Order.
Their order. And is there anything we can do about that?
No, I don't think they intend to fill it out that way, but I think it is the system. I've heard that before. So I actually have to go in and try it myself to see what it is that's putting, switching the positions or... Because I don't... When I bring it up to them, they say, "No, I put it in the right order." I don't know what they do that reverses the order or whatever, but I know what you mean.
Yeah, because it is confusing and I'm thinking, I hope that who we are employing know how to do this.
Yeah, their resumes that they attach to that, there are documents that they attach to the application, and they always seem to be in order. That's why I seem to think it's the system on our end. Yeah.
Betty, what's the question? I don't understand.
When, in the application, sometimes the dates are out of order. But the attached, you don't have all of the documents that are attached to the application and the resume, for the most part, they're always done very well.
They're filling these out online, right?
Yes.
I don't know why there's... It's got to be a formatting issue or something. Every one I've ever done, it's always had... There's always been a problem where you cut and paste something in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's not the employees' fault?
I don't think, I really, I don't think so. You know, it may be something they do inadvertently while they're filling in out, but they're not deliberately putting it in backwards or out of order. I don't believe that.
Okay.
Perhaps if they could hack into our system and fix it, we could hide it.
Maybe we should... Yes, jump away.
Any other discussion on personnel or the conferences? Student functions?
Roman numeral seven, letter A, just reporting the field trips within the 60-mile radius. And in letter B, we will be voting on a recommendation for a placement agreement between the Exeter Township School District and River Rock Academy Incorporated for alternative education services for the 2013-14 school year at a tuition cost of $130 per day per student and an additional $30 per day per student for transportation. That's all we have for student functions.
I have a question about letter B. Do we actually have students?
Yes.
Attending now?
Yes.
How many?
I thought I heard it was three. I don't know. That's a moving target, that number. So I don't know, do you have any idea? You probably don't because they pick them up and we don't, we're not on transportation. Yeah, I heard it was three. I'm not sure if that's still that number.
What is it? I don't know what the...
It's an alternative education placement for disruptive youth that's approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Education for students with severe behavioral needs.
Jim, sometimes placements are extremely difficult to even obtain. So for us to have, for us to have a plan in place, a place in place where we can actually put some of these kids, it's extremely important.
Yeah, and we have Manitow here. They're also an approved AEDY placement. But what was happening is some of the kids were saying, "Oh, just put me in Manitow, my friends there." They actually wanted to go there. And so we really felt that we needed another avenue there, so...
Well, I have a problem with this organization. It is a for-profit organization and it is a national chain. And like all national chains, they kind of gobble up. Like maybe Manitow is, I guess, it's not a national chain.
I don't think it's national, but they have a...
It's not a national chain.
Well, I got it all here. I put it out. I got it out. It is a national chain. They have people there. And also a for-profit, and they have investors.
They are a for-profit organization solely owned by two people. You may be looking at the wrong organization. Because they are only in Pennsylvania.
No, they're all over. And I looked at the administrative staff and this, and the educational staff. There is, there is one teacher, one special ed teacher, and one social skills, life skills teacher. That's all the teachers they have. They have clinical staff, a counselor, and two counselors. And they have a behavioral manager, staff, behavior manager, two of them. And the administrative staff. We have the, I guess, the campus director by the name of Kevin Hawes-Wait and an administrative associate by the name Cindy Quinter. Is that a manager you have?
My wife.
Your wife? Well, she's an icon of the business, Kevin.
She's a secretary. Give me a break.
I didn't know until this very moment. Neither did Dr. Knower, who sought out and chose this placement at anyone worked there who's related to anybody. We just picked the place based on their reputation, based on what we know about their staff and their credibility as being an effective placement for this type of student. And that's how they're selected.
Well, it says here, FAQs. Will my child have homework? No. Now, these are high school students. They have homework. And when I looked at all the agreements, I mean, we have to pay $30 a day to transport them. That costs about $28,000 a year at this price in 180 days.
The bigger concern should be the fact that these students have misbehaved to the point where they can't survive or succeed inside of our school for some reason, which is really their responsibility, but in turn, we as taxpayers are paying for this. That should really be your concern and the people we should speak out against are the students who are putting ourselves in a position where we're putting out money that we really don't need to spend, but we are responsible to do it anyway. So if anything, I think you should be speaking out against those students who are having to do this work.
Well, I...
Not against the institution or about how much we're having to pay, because that's just how we're legally bound to it.
Well, I would suggest that all of you, look at the material that I looked at, and it wasn't very impressive as far as what those children will be getting in this place.
Are you aware of what other alternative education facilities offer? Are you aware of what other alternative education facilities are within the area? Are you aware of what...
I knew we had Manitow.
We have Manitow.
All right. Aren't they from these other students that...
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. And we have students there. We need another option in addition to Manitow. And frankly, I trust our special education supervisors to make the best decision based on choosing a facility that has the correct credentials, that meets some of the needs of our students with behavioral disorders who are also have, you know, may have some other disabilities as well. And we work very closely with the staff for our students that are placed there. So I don't know their background specifically in terms of, you know, whether they're national or regional or what they are. But they charge a competitive rate. I can tell you that because I've seen many other agreements and I know how much others charge as well. So I would just recommend that the board considers this at the next meeting for approval.
All right. What type of students go there besides the ones that we sent to Manitow?
Pardon me?
What type of other students that could not be at Manitow as compared to the here, to this...
We can't, we can't just have one option when it comes to disruptive students. We can't just have one placement option. We do use Manitow. We use it a lot. We have several students there, but that cannot be our only option. There are some students, and I don't know their specific needs. I can ask Dr. Miller to come in and speak to that. But we would have to do that in an executive session because it could end up revealing something identifiable about a student. So I don't really want to go into the specifics, and I don't know all the specifics because I don't work in the special education department. But I know that I have faith in Dr. Miller to make a decision in terms of placement of students that is in the best interest of the district and of the students.
We never had this, we never had this company before, did we?
No, we did not.
So who did we send our students to? Who had we sent our students?
We sent our students to Manitow. We sent students to Opportunities, Bucksmont Academy, ALSIS.
Can I just ask a question because I'm not familiar with how this works? What sort of the term, what's the expected outcome with anybody, any disruptive student?
The goal is always to work on the student's problems and then return the student to the district.
And is that based on each individual student?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. It's, there is a constant evaluation and communication with the team. The team being the people at the facility where the students are located and also the whole school. And the parents, of course.
You know, we usually, I mean, do they usually make it back into the school?
You know, it's hard to say usually, Mike. They, certainly, a lot of them do. Some don't. Some graduate from...
So they can get, they can graduate?
They can graduate, yes.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? I'm just looking at page two and page five right here. Now, look to letter, page two, number three, cost payment. And it goes to the per diem cost of $30 for transportation services. But then on page five, or six A, it says, "Exeter Township School District will be repelling transportation sets to..." So I'm just wondering, are we paying for it and not getting it? Are they doing it or what's going on there?
They're doing it, to my knowledge. I'll check it. I don't know. I don't know.
They are doing it.
Then we should publish right there.
They're doing it, yeah. I don't have the attachment, and the reason that I don't is I gave it back to Dr. Miller because John Mollstein had looked at the contract, and he asked that, just as a technicality, we add that they are approved by Pennsylvania Department of Education as an AEDY for disruptive youth, and it's implied but not stated specifically, so I gave my attachment to Dr. Miller, and she said she would call them and have that language added in. So, I will also bring to her notice that strange language that does imply about the extra school district and transporters of the students.
Well, it also talks about, with special ed payment services, so I guess we might be sending some of our students there, and it says that we are going to be, they are going to be working in collaboration with our special education staff here to write the IEPs, and then I guess we're responsible really for the IEP, that they, they're not responsible. And we're responsible, they're going to be teaching these children, and yet the PSSAs are going to be counted in our school on our tests for our students. I mean, to me, that, you know, we're losing all control on who's teaching these students, and yet we're going to be accountable for them in the PSSA that's...
Pat, these students are liable for being expelled. They have done things that makes them potentially expellable. In the, even if we expel them or suspend them at a board hearing, we still, until they are, what, 17, have to send them, have to get their entry number 21, have to get them in education. The alternative education schools, ALSIS, BBHS, Berkmont, what's the name of this place? Rolling Rock or whatever. They are all private concerns with the exception of ALSIS, which is one of BCIU, but is also a profit-making center for out, for BCIU. So, since these children are no longer eligible to go to our school because of their conduct or whatever they did, and we have to educate them, we send them to an alternative education center, which are all privately owned except for ALSIS. And in fact, my wife worked at ALSIS too, so we had a conflict then. If you consider that a conflict, but she is not a decision-maker, she's a secretary, and she just happens to be very good at working with these problemed children. So, that is what it is.
Pat, what you just said can be said about any alternative school where we have a student placed at. It's not just about this school. And we want to have a say in the student's IEP. So, we want to work collaboratively with the school. We want to have a say in the student's IEP. They implement the IEP, but we have to have a say in what goes in the IEP in addition to the parents and...
Because by law, we are still responsible for them. And when they make up an IEP, a representative from our section goes out there and works with their special ed people, and they make up a individual plan that is agreeable to the parents, to this district, and to that alternative ed school. So, it's not some slipshod operation.
And you wouldn't want it any other way, honestly.
Well, when I hear about a for-profit investors, that bottom line is always the investors, it's not the children. And, you know, and it is a national chain. You look it up.
Well, we're going to move right on because now we're getting into your opinion, which quite frankly is a crap.
I'm not, I'm not an opinion. That is a fact. This is a national chain, and it's a for-profit. It says it right here.
Very good, ma'am. Very good, ma'am. You know nothing about the school.
I read it online, and it's their website.
My second favorite principal is here this evening.
I know. I thought I had moved up to first place.
No, you'll always be second in my heart.
I should pass, you know.
We want to know, right? We want to know who's number one, though, Bob.
Nah, nah. It was his first grade.
This is going to keep y'all guessing.
This is Miss Amy, right? This is the tri-ord.
Well, good evening. I'm very pleased to be here this evening. Welcome to our new board members. I always enjoy giving a board report because it's an opportunity for me to highlight some of the wonderful things that are happening at Lorraine. I'm very excited to have three teachers here with us. This is Williams, our kindergarten teacher. This is Moyer, our new kindergarten teacher, and of course, Mrs. Barnhart, one of our fourth grade teachers. So, there may be, who do you have? Oh, oh, Mrs. Keane, I'm sorry. Mrs. Keane, that's because you were sitting, you weren't sitting with the Lorraine people, you were sitting with your husband.
She's 50 percent of them, man.
So, obviously by now, you probably had an opportunity to read some of the things that are taking place at Lorraine, so I thought I'd highlight some of the things that are not in the report. Today, we were very fortunate to have Deb Dawson with us the entire day to visit Lorraine. She met with our kindergarten through third grade teachers, and we had conversations about the Common Core math and what's happening in our classrooms, and then we spent the rest of the day visiting our first grade, second grade, and third grade classrooms that are currently piloting the new investigations program. And it was quite an insight. We were both very impressed with the level of conversations that the students were having. They were, they were very enjoyable to listen to and very insightful. So, that's one of the things that I wanted to share with you. I'm also extremely excited about the two grants that, well, the two teachers who have received grants, and actually, one is our school secretary, Jennifer Hemstree. Jen alone has received $4,000 in grants this year for Lorraine. And Karen Williams is the queen of the grants, and she receives a $2,000 grant from Target to enhance her program in the kindergarten classroom. We have also continued our cooperation with the United Way. Last year, we worked with Stella Leonte to bring Ready Set, the Ready Set Read Program to our building. At that time, we had three volunteer tutors that would come in on a weekly basis and read with our students. This year, we have nine tutors that are coming in on a Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday to read with our students, and we feel that it's been very beneficial to our children and to the Lorraine community as well. So, we, we have had a lot of change. Obviously, you saw that we have quite a few new staff members, and even with all of that and the things that we've implemented, we've gone straight into the great start of the school year, and I can't believe it's already December. So, we're just, we're just rolling along. But I have to say, the reason why it's been such a smooth transition is because of the core group of teachers that we have there. We have not only excellent mentors who have taken the new teachers under their wing, but just, just in general, we have an extremely supportive staff that have worked very hard to make our new staff members feel welcome and part of the team, and it's a very enjoyable place today. Does anyone have any questions? Yes.
You have seven new teachers, it looks like. What have you done to assimilate or acclimate them into your, it seems like a lot, I don't know if that's a lot or not.
It is. And, and two of the teachers have already gone through the induction program. Several of the teachers are, already have extensive teaching experience, but our five new teachers have all been assigned mentors, and we meet with them on a monthly basis, and there's other activities that they participated in. Plus, our reading team has been very good about going in, working with them, supporting them with any needs that they have. But just in general, the teachers themselves have taken on that responsibility to check in on them and make sure that they're being assisted.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you, how's the all-day kindergarten going? And have you seen any of the first grade teachers? Have they been able to say, you know, this class is more prepared than it had been when we only had half-day kindergarten?
Well, we'll actually find that out next year because this is our first year of adding all full day implementation, so at the end of this current year, we'll, we'll have a little bit of a better idea. But I have to say, it's been a very big difference going into the all full day kindergarten, just the amount of time on task that the students have, they're not as rushed. And so, from a personal perspective, I feel as though it's going to be very beneficial. I had shared this with the administrative team. I happened to walk into Mrs. Moyer's class, and they were working on math, and I was really taken aback that each child had a math journal, you know, I'm thinking kindergarten, you know, but each child has this math journal. So, Mrs. Moyer says, "Okay, boys and girls, we're going to take out our math journal, and I want you to draw a four-square." I'm thinking, no way. You know, these are like five, six-year-olds, and she's going to expect them to do this four-square. So, on the me, so I'm sitting down, they all do it, they're all drawing this four-square. So, then she says, "Okay, now, I'd like for you to, in each block, represent the number six." So, I'm thinking, you know, really, six years old, you know, five, six years old, are they really going to be able to do this number six? So, the one little boy leans across, and he's, he's drawing, he's doing tally marks, he's right, it's right, and then he leans over and he goes, "This is a ten, bring. I don't have to do that." And I was amazed.
Say it to you?
Yeah. I know how to do that. And I was, I was amazed. And as I walked around, then I saw another little guy writing the word six. So, actually, if you come into the Lorraine office, we had him, when he came to visit us to bring the mail, we had him write six and then give us his autograph, and it's on the bulletin board in the office, because we were, we were so impressed, you know, it's but, and that, and that's something that while our half-day kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Firestone, you know, tried to get in as much as she could, you're, you're very limited when, you know, students are leaving a little bit after eleven o'clock in the morning. So, we're very, we're very excited and grateful that we have this opportunity.
How has your staff been so successful in raising money from Target and Walmart and SANS?
Very persistent. We're very persistent, and as I said, Karen Williams, she was actually the one that showed our secretary, Jennifer Hemstree, how to do that, and they just, every opportunity that they, they get, they're applying for something to, you know, enhance our ability. And the majority of the money that the secretary has been raising is to help revitalize our courtyard to make it an outdoor learning space for children to work on science and, and things of that nature. So, so we're very excited. Yes.
With the numbers received for math, are you, reading, always, that takes a little time to pick up sometimes, is there anything going on right now? Anything that would help, that you're working on, to bring the numbers for the students' reading numbers up now to get similar to the math, or sort of challenges?
You know, every year, we're dealing with a different cohort of students, and the test has changed so much, so it's very difficult to pinpoint exactly what it is, so we're focusing in on just solid instruction as far as working with balanced literacy and implementing that to our best abilities, specifically focusing in on guided reading and targeting students' reading level and mediating them where they are. And Julie Klein has been very helpful with that. Before, we really didn't have any type of assessment that would help us pinpoint exactly where the students were struggling, but now we have something, we refer to it as FNP, which is a Fontis and Pennell Assessment, which is a very lengthy assessment to give, but the teacher actually has the opportunity to sit and listen to the child reading, and they ask comprehension questions, so it gives us a better idea of where, where a student's struggling. In addition to that, we were fortunate enough to purchase something called Foundations, because what we were finding is that we were spending all this time trying to work on one skill, but really, the issue was students were having a hard time basically, when I was in school, we called it sounding out words, now call it decoding. And because they were so hung up on trying to figure out what the word was, they couldn't read the sentence, they couldn't read the passage, and then they couldn't comprehend, which of course, when you're trying to take a PSSA exam and you have these lengthy passages, it becomes very difficult for the students. So, those are some of the things that we've implemented this year. We included Foundations into second grade. We did do a little bit of it last year as far as remediation, and so our strategy is to identify the students that are struggling through the FNP assessment and specifically target their needs. And in my report, I talked about doing these intervention planning meetings where we actually sit together as a team and look at all of our students individually and talk about what specifically their area of need is, and then how we're going to address it. And again, our strategy is that, our hope is that this will translate into increased achievements for us for next year, for the year.
So, is, you're starting, you're starting the PSSA?
Mm-hmm.
So, next year, it's supposed to be 100%? Is that what it is?
Well, we, we received a waiver, so we're not, we're not going to have, they, they've eliminated that so far, but we're still going to be taking the PSSAs this year, a waiver in March, but then the following year, we're going to be taking assessments based on the PA Common Core. And at this point, really, nobody has any idea as to what that looks like. So, our response to that has been just to make sure that we have really good instruction, that we are, that our teachers are supported, that we have resources in place to help them, and that we provide them at the time that they need to, to do their jobs. And the other piece of that is the parent piece, and that's, Lorraine is a 1001 school, and it's very important to us to get parents in there, and that's why we do the breakfast for bookworms, and we do the one-on-one parent conferences with our first and second grade parents, because we want them to come in. It's very difficult when you have a 15-minute parent conference to go through all that information, there's a lot. And so, we very much believe in getting parents in and talking to them one-on-one about their child's progress right away in September, and then our reading teacher, our reading specialist, they go and follow up in those conferences, the parent conferences in November that we just had, we just had, so we can, we can stay in touch with our parents.
With the reading, do you, is everything pushed in, or do you send some students out to the reading teacher?
We pull our students out because they're using a very specialized program. It's called LLI, Level Literacy Intervention, and max, it's, it's three to four students. It's a very intense intervention. Plus, we have two reading specialists, and we're very, or two reading aides, and we're very fortunate that we were able to hire certified teachers, so they also pull students out, max five to six. We really like to try and keep it to five, and they're doing sort of success. Or if we find that students in third grade are missing that decoding piece, we're doing Foundations with them.
So, how many students would you say do you pull out? Out of your...
It depends per grade level, but I would say if we were doing the max, it would be about 16.
And reading?
Mm-hmm, 16 per grade level.
16 per grade level, oh, okay. Are these, any on special ed, special need students, or is it just a general population?
No, some of, some of our students are itinerant special education students, so it's more appropriate that they work in a group with the regular education students opposed to working in a special education classroom. It's better, it's better to meet their needs.
So, they're, they're being integrated with the directors?
Absolutely.
Thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a nice holiday.
Are there any other matters to come before the board?
Well, I'd like to bring up Senate Bill 1085, which has to do with what's called legislative charter reform bills, and I don't know...
I'm sorry, who was that?
It's the legislative update on charter reform bills that we have, and I'm sure this bill as it is, it is not a very good bill for, for public education, because if this bill passes the way it came out of the Senate committee, there will, there will be university authorizers on charter schools, so that, the brick and mortar schools, so that if anybody wants to do a brick and mortar school here in Exeter Township, they don't, they will not come to the school district like they did before. They will come to an authorizer, who knows, they're going to be throughout the state, and I guess any authorizer can, could, you know, could come and say, you know, "Okay, put us here in Exeter." So, this is taking... So this is taking local control away from us. It's a very dangerous bill if it is passed because I think that is going to be the privatization of much of public education. If anyone ever reads about what's happening in Philadelphia and how many schools are closing, how many schools are under private groups with public dollars, you know, we've got to really push against this bill. I hope, I hope my, like, my senator has spoke against it. I hope, I hope we could send a letter to all the senators. I don't know, is it Promethance in charge? Who's in charge of the Republican Senate Chairman?
I think that's what I read.
I mean, this is a very dangerous bill. And they also are going to allow, rather than the district, like, you know, every month we get how many, how much we pay the bills for the charter schools, well, that's going to be automatically taken out of subsidy, the subsidy that comes to us. It's going to be automatically taken out. And I guess we won't see it at Lorraine. We'd be able to then know each one, how much, where it's going.
Right. And you would have to reconcile it. There's reconciliation done.
It's not that we send them the bill, they're going to take it out of our subsidy. So I would hope that we can defeat this bill as, as it's. And I guess they were going to work on something with the double dipping. But guess what?
Yeah, and pull back on that.
It's only for the state. The state's not going to put in, and the school district is still going to be putting in. So what is that all about? So it's a terrible, terrible piece of legislation, like much of the legislation that's coming out of Harrisburg these days. So I, 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 I hope everyone around this table, you know, calls your senator. And if you have any influence with other senators, especially the one that's in Senate Education Committee up there, you know, do something because it's a terrible bill.
Any other matters? I've got two pieces of paper. The Pennsylvania School Board Association gives you one certificate showing that you're on the school board. Congratulations.
Give you a nominee here. Thank you.
I'm collecting.
With no other matters coming for, for the board, we will be meeting in executive session to discuss personnel a little more.
For those of you who have not, Matty, Mark, Mark, stand up. Say hello. This is, this is one of my students. He's a senior at Redding High School. And he is just here doing some homework. Learning how, learning how calm education and board work can be.
You guys are pretty mellow.
So since Russ said, yep, what kind of a teacher is he? Did you hear he's retiring and how does that make you feel?
Let me answer the first question.
If you, if you want, there's a soapbox up there. That's where you can stay a little.
Well, I'm not very classy myself, but for a teacher, he's been pretty good. He's always like.
Did he say pretty good?
Not when we talked about the car.
You're pretty and you're good.
Well, he already, like, from what I've already seen, he already handles most of his students with care and usually admiration. Like, you usually expect more out of the, out of everyone than normal other teachers probably would. Mostly from other districts, I would assume. But our district is pretty.
The scary part is we know what that means.
But yeah, when, when you see a teacher like that, be very accepting of students that normally other districts would naturally laugh at or, you know, something like, something or other. You know, it just gives you a lot of confidence. What was the other question?
How do you feel about him retiring?
Well, I've already had at least three teachers retire on me, so I just. So I generally accept it with at least some happiness knowing that they served their time helping to teach.
My parole here, you have.